Just as for all.
On leave.
It's like locked in a. We're gonna have to end it and go back in.
Or harm than good and that it could reinforce negative perceptions of. I don't know. If you if you've ever listened to a poorly produced podcast, it can be grating on the ears and certainly will not attract an audience, but could actually reinforce negative perceptions about school department. So if we're gonna do it, I would wanna see some sort of professionalism to it, which tends to cost a little bit of money, but time and expertise too, and it can get complicated. But in principle, I'm always generally in favor of more communication, more transparency. I have no problem with the outlet, the medium. I think it's a good idea. Just probably need some shaping and refinement.
Thank you. I wanna echo with members Saretz. I mean, Saretz said, my concern is that since this is something that I feel strongly about, I wanna make sure that it happens as opposed to, you know, months of planning and preparation and finding minimal and, you know, the pricing or whatever, or finding the student group or what whatnot, that could be dragged out for months. But a newsletter at least could start. And then we shift to a podcast afterwards at the time. But but I would still say the same concern, I remember spread rates, but my concern is just delaying it and not making it start because we're fighting to meet the podcast. Even though I do like that, I think we'd be very polished and professional if we do it the right way and reinforce it and low barrier and all the things that you suggested, which I like, but just afraid that it just.
Yeah, this isn't related necessarily to the podcast, but it sort of piggybacks a little bit on a member Kerry's comments about newsletter. And I know we, I think we talked about this two weeks ago, but I was wondering if maybe Superintendent Robinson could just remind us. Is is the communique coming back? Is that is that something we've discussed and what's the timeline for that?
It is, and it comes out once a year, twice a year. We just had the one go out right before the holiday and then we have another one in the spring. So that and that is a communication, but it really comes from the school department. And I think what this started, a member of Kiri did mention, you know, she brought this up initially. So when we look at school committee self evaluation, we wanna make sure that if we're evaluating, if the school committee is evaluating itself, we wanna have those aspects that are being evaluated in place so that everyone's clear on what those are. So when you look at there's I'm having it marked, but the outward community, the committee, community relations and communications, it's on the second page, letter K. So that's where this discussion was spawned. It could be, to your point, you know, is it is it enough to say twice a year in the communique, there'll be a school department? I mean, a school committee as an example.
I think I always love the communique and I know a lot of people in the community like it because especially folks that don't necessarily have kids in schools, being able to still know what's going on and connect into the school because they have a niece or an nephew or a grandchild or they're just interested in the schools and a retired teacher or whatever. So I I think that's a, yeah. Our overall communication. Also as a community as well.
Yeah, I have one more point. In terms of the newsletter, I love newsletters, but I know that I always hear community members say that, you know, we're bombarded by too much information, too many newsletters, too, too many emails. And so I'm wondering if we do that, that mode of communication that it's embedded into the communique or embedded into something, so it's not more information, right? So information overload and oftentimes if you get too many things like that, people just end up, you know, deleting, ignoring, avoiding. So making sure that we're concise instead of sending out too many things. And it is the the podcast where you also referring to communication as well in terms of I missed that part.
Yes, yeah. So making, you know, sharing what wouldn't say even what we're focusing on that one or what's going on, you know, in case of that one. You're doing all of those kinds of things. And, you know, really trying to make sure, you know, obviously we can plan it to you, a much more embedded sort of agenda within it, but at this point, just what do you think areas have an idea? And we can get this one pretty quickly.
Yes, yeah. And again, I would echo to making sure that it is of a high quality because we want it to come through strong.
Does anyone else have any other that we went talk about any other parts of this policy for now? So next up is the cell phone policy J I C J review in the session.
So I'm happy to jump in here. We've had several discussions with the student advisory committee. I took this as an opportunity to share with the student kind of how policy works at the school department. They had an opportunity to read this policy and you know, they recognize and acknowledge that at least at the high school, it's not really a policy. There's no, there's not major issues with the policy. It's more about how do we implement that policy and procedures at the school level. To a clear agreement, they recognize that there are pros and cons to each. I will say the consensus of the group was that, and these are just, you know, recommendations for everyone to consider pre-K to eight. The there's no need for both for kids to have cell phones. That was kind of across the board that and my understanding is for the most part, that is working rather well, but I can definitely circle back around that with the middle level administrators, particularly at the high school level, they were in favor of some type of structured approach so that as they progressed through high school, they earned more privileges. And I thought that was an interesting way to go. So we can talk about, you know, do we wanna do we want to make changes to this policy right now? What ideas do you have? And I'd love to hear, you know, more thoughts from the committee on this this policy.
I'm sorry to jump back to the school committee evaluation. What would be the the next steps as far as?
Structured approach, so that.
That's the next step. As far as the evaluation, I would say we have to vote for that, vote for self evaluation, but jumping a little bit ahead to the future work future workshop topics, the proposed self evaluation was labeled an apple. So if we were to pass that evaluation, we wouldn't have much to evaluate ourselves on depending on when the self evaluation was approved first reading, second reading, as well as, you know, what we would decide on the communication plan. So I don't, I was just trying to clarify what the next step would be. Deciding on communication plan, I would imagine, and then for simultaneously voting for the policy.
So I'm open for discussion on that, on how we want to first. Happy to hear thoughts.
I think maybe it could be on next agenda.
For future topic.
Right, right.
Oh, absolutely. But yeah, because I think we are, you know, significantly, you know, almost halfway through the school year, so it makes sense to get everything set up for this year and then it could be for next year. That's that was kind of my thought process. So we'll add this to future agenda.
I'm just in second time.
Are we going back to the cell phone side?
Oh, of course.
Okay. I wanna explore a little bit that that comment you made, the no need to have cell phones K through eight. What does that look like in terms of a policy? I guess I would say what, or what might that look like as a policy? Do you have thoughts on that? You know, what, in other words, what? So right now, if a sixth or seventh or eighth grader brings a cellphone to school, that's that's allowed, correct?
They keep them in their lockers is my understanding. And I I apologize, I haven't gotten in-depth emails, but it is kind of a tiered approach unless I don't know if we have the, yeah. I'm sure listed in the handbooks, the specifics, my understanding is, and again, you know, see, there's there's discretion, right? Because there's different situations, but in terms of in the classroom, I would imagine they would get a warning and then it would be taken to the office. Further measures will be taken if it continues to be an issue. I know there have been some specific cases where the child is required to drop it off in the main office if it's a pervasive issue and it's held there until the end of the school day. I think we have to be cautious with being responsible for other devices, but if that's a process that's working, I don't see a major, major problem with that.
Do you mind if I, one more time? I I I know that there are some school districts in Maine that are adopting a stricter policy around students having access to their cell phones during academic school day, right? So they're allowed to to bring them to school, but then once they come into school and they go to their homeroom, there's there's some mechanism in place for the phone to be left in the homeroom. A lot of some schools have adopted a pouch where the the students, when they come into the homeroom, if they have their cellphone, it's put into a pouch, it stays in this locked pouch for the entire school day. At the end of the school day, they take their cellphone out of the pouch and they they go on. They go home, they go on the bus, whatever it may be. Other school, I know Old Town School Department has, they built some little cubbies or something like that in the homeroom. Students come in, phone goes in the cubby and it stays in the cubby in the homeroom. Whatever system it may be, the point is that students are not allowed to have their phone with them throughout the school day, in their pocket, in their backpack, whatever it may be. I I'm a proponent of that type of of system. There's just been a ton of research on phones being distracting to students and interfering with their academics just by them having them with them, not necessarily using them, just having them on their body, vibrating, dealing, whatever it may be, just distracting them. Just the the thought of the phone being there is distracting, distracting to students and interfere with their academics. So I'm in favor of a system that's a little bit more robust in that phones are still allowed to be on schools, school campuses, but during the academic school day, they're not.
And for this, you're you're suggesting from the up to eighth grade or do you mean up till 12th?
I I don't know at this point, right now, I'm still sort of working through that in my own mind, but I I think, I think sixth, seventh and eighth grade would be a really good place to start potentially if we went to that type of of model, particularly if there's an expenditure involved or if we're gonna be purchasing these pouches. You know, they're not extraordinarily expensive individually, but if you're talking about sixth through 12th grade, several thousand students, that's so I haven't thought through all of that, but I wanted to sort of put that out there and I'd be interested in what others think about this idea.
Thank you. I echo a lot of the comments, a member Saretz said. One thing I just wanna highlight is I think that we might have a divergence between what's in our policy now and what reality in the schools is. Because our policy says that cell phones, as well as tablets, computers, different things are not allowed. It's pretty clear. But you can't help but notice it when you're in a school, even schools with younger age group kids. And then I'm speaking for myself, I'm hearing from teachers everywhere at the high school that it is chronic and is constantly interrupt interrupting the school day as well as the flow of thought and the flow of education. I I need to give this some more thought too. I think we collectively do, but I'm really for a blanket provision that kids can't have them with them during the school day. No. Undoubtedly, there will be many students that will be up in arms about that and handful of parents too. But I feel that they will thank us years from now when they realize the wisdom of a policy because I just feel like we're going through as human species, a huge science experiment about what our brains can handle with this level of interruption and distraction and human brains have been developing for hundreds of thousands, millions of years, and this is all in the great scheme of time, in the last split second that this has been introduced to us. And we're going through this massive test that by virtually any data point and metric is not going well. As soon as everybody started carrying one of these around in their pockets in the mid to late 2000s, and especially when social media became so ubiquitous, anxiety spiked, depression spiked. People's self-image, especially young women, sense of self-worth. Every metric goes the wrong direction and it's directly tied to the phones. And that's to say nothing of the, just the, what Tim said and others, the the distraction in the classroom, just having the presence of a phone. Just having that on the table draws my mind and I have a fully formed frontal cortex hopefully. I've been around and it's distracting just to have it there. And so for teenagers or even younger than teenager students, their minds are just not ready for that level of distraction and it plays itself out of variety and other things. So I'm glad you're vetting through the student group, but I also am gonna say from my position as a duly elected member of the school committee, I'm gonna be in favor of a stronger policy and all the way through. All the way through.
And I um I'm more with the high school students. I think um there's a there's a very. Clear divide between K through eight and then high school on. I think I'm the only. Member here who has high school, a high school student and high school students who graduated. It's very, very different for high schoolers. Um this week, for example, is midterm week and so they're in and out, different hours. Um a lot more independent. I like to keep track of my children. Sometimes I can be a helicopter mom, yes, but I like to know where they are and how things are and. It there's a sense of safety too, um whenever we've had drills, we've had certain things. Or when there's a fight at school, I get a text message, you know, things of that nature. It's very different for high school students. Versus K through eight. There is no reason we shouldn't have a stricter um policy for K through eight. And I do hear that sometimes, you know, children are children, right? They sneak in their cell phone. So K through, there there is no need for that. Um a telephone uh in the main office that they need to contact their parents. Um I think high school students, it's very different. Hopefully, we've set that foundation K through eight. And then, you know, following the policy, I mean, this clearly states that. You know, students are prohibited from using it, you know, during classrooms. Um clearly states that they're prohibited in locker rooms, you know, areas where there's privacy. So, you know, if. High school should have, or I should say, if if teachers and administrators are enforcing this policy for high schoolers. And I don't really see this as being a problem. Um K through eight is different. I think it's, we need a stricter policy where, you know. Cell phones are placed in the locker room or in their lockers and not taken out until the end of the day, for example, but this does not clarify. Who we are referring to. And I think um Dr. Robinson, you mentioned meeting with the student advisory groups and. There there was um, you know, clear uh discussion around, you know, this is for safety purposes, correct?
There, yes, and and they did express, um the group had a really great discussion when we uh approached. And um they really looked at some, I think, uh. Interesting perspectives coming into it. A couple of them mentioned that if they didn't have access to their cellphone, it would make it. Much more stressful for them because of the changes in after-school activities that potentially happen. Uh the after-school jobs that some of the um students hold and um, you know. I'm I'm of the assumption that a group of twelve is somewhat representative. I mean, these are um, you know, highly involved um. High, you know, well-achieving students. So I think that they don't offer a huge why, but they went out and talked with kids. In between our two months of meeting to try to uh get a bit a better grasp on things from other students. Uh but they did express some concerns. Um the couple first at first said, you know, yes, just ban them altogether. And then the discussion started when, you know, it it turned into, well, maybe. Maybe that wouldn't be what's best. Um and then there was also that concern of um how, and and I would echo this. How are we teaching young people to manage their lives? And I understand the brain development. Um I definitely see that. I also think um when we pair this with the. Um metrics that are all going in the wrong direction, I think cellphone use is one aspect of that. I think this. But turn into a much bigger discussion through the mental health aspects, uh because I think there are. Multitude of factors that have contributed to the decline of um mental health. And the cellphone might be one, but I think we have to tease kind of all of that out. Uh the other. Perception that I've heard and not only from the student group, but um in other articles and things that I've read. Is uh and this was one from the Department of Ed, which uh I can share. And it talked about, you know, it's not necessarily the be all end all to make a blanket's uh policy. It's really best to involve all of the uh those who are involved to develop procedures that are gonna work for everyone. So this, those are just some things that are kind of floating around in my mind and um I think it's. It's tricky if we were to make a blanket um. K twelve, I think that might, and maybe it would be short term, it's hard to say. I mean, my mind is still kind of. Working through what is the best way to go, uh but I think there's lots of information to consider. So there's a few different layers to this, if I think about it. One, I I think we're all in agreement that K through eight, pre-K through eight. We can have a pretty solid policy. Um as a parent who has regularly had my kiddo come home and say, oh, I saw this today. I'm like, where did you see that? It's happening on the bus too. So I know we've been talking about during the school day. My kids come home because there are mixed age groups on those buses with some stuff that I, he does not have a tablet, he doesn't have a phone on that phone, right? Um and he's not gonna get one for quite some time. Uh so there's a strategic reason for that. And to remember Sprague's point, there's stuff that he just doesn't need to be exposed to on the internet. Um whether that's in school, uh on the bus, uh we pretty much monitor what happens there because, you know, he's only ten. Right? So I do think we need to think about not just during the school day, but what are the rules for the bus? Right? And I know the bus can be a difficult place anyway, where kids are sitting together and they already have bus monitors and there's so much to pay attention to. Um but I find that's where a lot of the the sharing of things on screens is happening, um at least from my experience. When I think about the high school level, um there's certainly a case where a limited use of cell phones during the day. Would think. Um I would think that it is a key opportunity where, and number spread, I think you and I talked about this before just. You know, other times, it's an opportunity to build that media literacy at the high school age. So while we might restrict what they can use it for. You can start to have a campaign around, for example, the high school, like. What is this that you're looking at? How do you verify that this is actual information? Is this AI generated? Like to start to give them some of the tools to be responsible media consumers. Um because they're starting to get a little bit more savvy, a little, you know, you know, as they approach high school. And then as they transition into whatever comes after high school, whether that's the working world, you know, further education. It would be good for them to be armed with the tools to know. What's what's quality, what's not quality, what's real, what's not real, credible sources of information. Um and balance, that was talking about mental health, like how do you not get sucked into the doom scroll vortex that can happen? Um so there are some teachable moments in that. Um how you build that in is obviously super complex. Uh but I think that we have to have a little bit of that in mind um. Uh as we're moving through and thinking about these things. So those are my.
Yeah, just one more point. Um you know, I was wondering about enforcement too, because I know that some teachers are strict and and, you know. Strictly adhere to policy and others are more lenient and um are are very flexible with the students and. You know, they're they're the popular teachers, right, that the students love, but how can we make sure that we, this is enforceable across the board, right? So there are not some teachers who are flexible and lenient and others who are really strictly adhering to the policy. Um I don't know if um, you know, if there's uh, you know, follow through with this at the high school level. I have to put Principal Butler on the spot, but I'm just curious on how we can make sure that this is enforced. Even if there is a strict policy, right?
I I think it does warrant further discussion. I I um have not had this direct discussion with all of the administrators. Uh and that was what I wanted to do is gather this information, see where we all stand and where the where the committee stands and then. Bring that back to say, okay, here's all the information we have, what can we do a little bit forward? So those will be some next steps.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few other other points. Another concern that I've heard from a administrator. Here in Bangor, and these these concerns were made during meetings was talking about. Cell phones being utilized for bullying. Uh and particularly at the high school level and and some of the most egregious bullying cases that have been investigated. Uh at the high school level were typically facilitated through cell phones, and this was during the school day. Um and I've I've heard about this from other teachers as well and other districts, that a lot of the bullying has gone sort of underground. Uh and it's and it's being done through cell phones during the school day, pictures being taken, pictures being shared. In the bathroom or somewhere in the school, the teachers just have no idea that it's going on. Uh so so that's a that's a concern that I think is important for us to think about. In terms of the the safety issue, if if you listen and and students, students wanting to have their phones and. Parents wanting their students to have their phones in case of some type of emergency. If you speak and if you listen to emergency responders, they will tell you that the the worst thing that a student can do during an emergency. Is be on their cellphone texting with mom or dad and that really what they should. And again, it it it. It does what cell phones do, it distracts you from what you're supposed to be doing. Which is listening very carefully to what your teacher's telling you, your administrator's telling you what directions are coming on over the intercom and. Um so that's, so that I think that's an important thing uh to consider as well. The the it's a rhetorical question, but the question that I keep going back to is. What are the what are the positives of having a student having a cellphone from the beginning of the academic school day until the end? What are the negatives of a student having a cellphone from the beginning of academic uh academic school day until the end? For me, it's. Yeah, so there's there's many more negatives to a student having access to that cellphone uh than there are positives, but but that's just, that's my opinion. Thanks.
Um I'll be moved on Scott here. I actually. First reason is proving the liability issue. Cell phones, a thousand dollars. Now you've given a teacher twenty thousand dollars, you're liable to promise that they're charged up. And if there's a buyer, are they supposed to grab them? Are we now liable for those phones? Say something happens to them, I I see eight enormously huge amount of problems with that. Yeah, but that's just, again, my my first thought, but the other issue that I have. I have two other major issues, but the biggest one I noticed around uh assistive and object technology. And further ostracizing the students by, you know, my concern is, say we have a new cell that comes in. That sub doesn't realize the students' phone is for us and adaptive or assistive technology purpose, and they take that phone. And now that kid can't participate, or the bigger concern, that kid's type one diabetic, not the phone, it's also helping them friends. That phone's on. And what do we do? And now we're liable for that. So that's, I know that these are extreme circumstances, but. They do affect a lot of different kids one different ways other than a distraction. The other thing that I cannot stress enough is. We have to teach them moderation. We have to be able to say like, no, you can't have your phone now. That's it. And you can look back later. That's it. That's it. Like, that's kind of it. It doesn't need to be complicated. I mean, you have to learn. We all have to learn that. Like, I don't. I don't think that that is. Something that gets stressed enough, especially in the senior year. So again, yes, go ahead, Ms. Ray.
I would be fine with exceptions for health-related issues. Or I I don't know the exact term you're using, but I'm with you on that.
Yes.
And the the tail end possibility of liability due to like the teacher storing the phones. Is much less in my mind in magnitude towards the liability of not educating our children. Because they are so distracted by these devices. I think that is much more. High-risk proposition. Than some of the risks that you and others might mention.
And to that point, I hadn't thought about the liability, liability risk as well, but just momentarily, because I thought to myself. This goes into the policy, your student brings their phone to school at their own risk, understanding that it will be placed here, like they they would do that anyway, like. Seeing the student's cellphone, they're like, they're smashed, right? A lot of them are broken screens and whatnot. Um so you send that technology on um and oftentimes it gets broken throughout the day, but I think that if it's, you send it at your own rescue now, it's like checking luggage. You trust the TSA with your luggage to a certain extent, knowing that it could come out damaged, right? Because things happen. Uh but I think that we can be careful about that. I'm not as worried about that component, and I one hundred percent agree with members right, there's a student who's using their technology. Um and in the, you know, for adaptive purposes or whatnot. Um then we just need to make sure that we are properly supporting substitutes at the beginning of the day to say, this is, you know. Here's the list of students who might have this out because they're using it for this specific reason, or because they're, you know, tracking their insulin or, you know, their. Their E1C levels and things like that. So I think that there are ways to work around those and I agree that it. The benefit of reducing cell phone use in the day far outweighs having to work around some of the more nuanced situations. I think that it's important and we can teach them balance, right? Um but maybe that balance is, you you can only have your cellphone in your locker, right? And if you are in between classes and you wanna check notes. But then it needs to go back in the locker and you can't just carry around with you during the day. Like, it's not like we're saying you can't have access to period maybe at the high school level. Uh but there's like, it's it's a locker check and you go back in, you know? I don't know, the the nuances and the logistics and the headaches of monitoring that, I've never been a principal at a high school, so. Um where anyone can monitor those things, but I think that we can put those systems in place um and see how it works, right? It's gonna take some creative thinking, but. I think it's important that we do something.
And uh member, okay, good very. Again, this is a complex issue. I appreciate this, I really just talk about it, but I'm opening it in depth. This topic didn't need the other discussions about it. Uh my first thought is, and that's always my first thought, is how are other. School districts doing this? Um I know that um members Saret mentioned that other school districts in in our area have. Ever made this, implemented this in the beginning of school year um in four. Um so at this point, they must have some type of information or data or some type of. Information that can assist us in in what we decide to do. Um we're a complete man at the high school level. Is it even being enforced? Are they able to enforce it? Principals and teachers applying it equally, of that type of information, we wanna know. Uh before we decide anything on our own. Uh and the in our policy, it seems. Quite strict um currently. So it seems that we have a policy in place that's not being enforced. Uh and I wanna ask why. Uh and my first thought is because of. Uh lack of support for teachers. I don't know in what way that we could get um support for teachers in order to enforce it, I'm not sure, but again, you can look at other school districts to see. How they're um better at up and learning, and maybe they're not, maybe they're struggling as well, and uh we need to come together and brainstorm ways to. Uh properly enforce it, but. It seems like different teachers have different rules in their in their class, but what's this policy allows, because it says, you know, check the. The handbook or the privileges, um but. To get some kind of. Um even application or at least somewhat even application across classrooms would be helpful if we're really trying to. Address the issues that cellphone use and distraction are causes for students. I I kind of agree with almost everyone's points. Um about uh needing to teach them accountability and the ability to uh deal with distractions, but also recognizing that they're. Young and unimpressionable and not adults uh and uh. To understand the the evidence, the great amounts of evidence that suggests that or. Um show that cellphone use um can have some with that. So I'm just, I would just wanna start by looking at what. Public school districts do with kind of gauging what we can learn from them um and taking.
Yeah, moving down, I can gather that information.
And final comment here, I promise. Um so, and I think the the last thing that none of us really touched on. What is the fact that um this takes like the entire community effort, right? Um so the main deal, we had a um. The pledge, the wait till eighth pledge. Um and I'm a big, big advocate of that and I, you know, share that with. Friends and uh family members and neighbors. Uh and I'm adhering to that personally with my children, right? None of my children got phones before the end of eighth grade. And it it's not a popular thing, right? Because now my seventh grader is like, all my friends have cell phones. I'm like, well, I'm their parent, right? Um I'm yours, so. Um it's it's not a popular thing, but I feel so strongly about it because of all the, you know, research that's there and. Um the older siblings, my older children did just fine and so. Um but I'm wondering if we can push that out more, but community uh awareness, community education. For parents, because parents are ultimately buying cell phones for their children at very young ages too. I know kindergartners who have cell phones. And I understand that sometimes it's it's a necessity because the parents are both working and it's communication with the child and I I get that. Um but for children who just have it, just to have it and they're they're, it's attached to them twenty-four seven and, you know. Um if we can really push that out from from the the Bangor School Department or the school committee, I think it would be very. Beneficial for the entire community. beneficial for the entire community to help us with that. You know, if you can wait, you know, to buy a, a cell, a smartphone, right? And I'm talking about the little flip phones, right? The, the, the smartphones. Um, I think that would really help us, right? Especially K through eight.
I'll be brief. Thank you for bringing that up. I've talked about that too, and I just have not had the bandwidth to push on it. But it is a really important topic to me. And a lot of the parents need the education, for the reasons you're saying. But the parents are just as screen addicted as the kids in some ways, and the kids are learning it from the parents. So, we have a public health responsibility, I think, to convene and to lead on this. Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Making my question just sort of, what are the next steps to you?
Well, I can add this to, again, to a future, um, workshop agenda and circle back with the information that I gathered in between now and then.
So, next year, you know, we need the governance calendar? So, I'm surprised.
No, I was just gonna say that that was, it was all, it was shared electronically, though I don't have, um, copies, but other than this. Uh, but I would love to hear any, um, thoughts or ideas on any other items that we want to, you know, add to the calendar or if there's anything that you feel needs to be modified, because this is a draft.
Thank you. I like the idea of this. I like what we're doing. I like the open discussion. A couple of things, I'm just particularly interested in the capital improvement review, you know, ongoing, um, renovations to schools, but some of the bigger long-term questions do. I think sometimes these questions are so big and they're so slow-moving, they're suddenly like, wow, a year went by and we didn't talk about that, but I'm just very interested in especially the Fairmount Merry Snow conversations, what happens to those buildings? What happens with the middle schools? I think we're all kind of interested in that topic. Uh, and then the other thing I just want to keep kind of near the front burner is, uh, tuition students, drawing in students from neighboring towns. Yeah, what is our, what, what are we doing there? What's the marketing behind that? What is the storytelling? Uh, how can we, how can we do better?
And I'll get you back off of, uh, Ben's statement here. Um, I saw an email about, um, like a, um, what it, what's it called? What? No, I don't know. I'm thinking Step Up Day, but not Step Up Day, but it's, um,
Like a true.
Eighth graders, yeah, yeah. And I, and I thought, wow, this would be a perfect time along with that, right? You know, some, you know, whether it's, uh, um, you know, the wonderful things that Ray does, right? The little videos or whatever attached to them. Because if the eighth graders and their parents are coming, you know, that's perfect timing.
Add a video to the email.
Yeah, yeah. Or whatever is being pushed out to eighth grade parents, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully getting some of those, uh, students to.
I remember someone else, I mean, that's a very common. I would say this more for Katie, because she's not here, but she's got interesting ideas around foundation, uh, education foundation. And I think it would be great to learn what some other school districts do and uh, you know, how, how individuals in the business community can support things at schools.
Thank you for that insight. So that would be on a, um, would that be a separate committee of what you're thinking or?
Well, I'm just kind of unfamiliar with the concept, but I, so I'd like to learn more and I don't know if it needs to be committed or if it just, it would be a good discussion item. I don't know what the barriers or what, how heavy a lift it is to start an educational foundation, but, um, just coincidentally, this would not be the model, but I've been learning about, uh, at the collegiate level, uh, businesses supporting, uh, athletes and athletic programs through this name, image, likeness, the NIL program. And so I'm not actually suggesting we roll something like that at high school level. But it's been really fascinating to learn about the different avenues that an individual or business can support a collegiate sports programs or individual athletes. So there might be causes that are particularly interesting to donors out there, either businesses or otherwise, that if we had a vehicle for them to give to, it, you could imagine all sorts of things, like in, if you had a physical therapy place that was particularly interesting. I know we gotta be mindful of, you know, who we're opening the doors to and who are not, but it could be a chance to collect some funds that would relieve some pressure on our own budget. And in a very affirming way, recognize the charitable instincts of people and businesses in the community. And Bangor High School has thousands of alumni, so.
I think that, I think there is a lot of opportunity there and, uh, I can definitely put this on as a future topic, for sure.
Check in with Katie too, but she's more articulate about it than I am.
Are we on future topics or are we on, you know?
We are still on the calendar.
Calendar, yeah. Yeah, and I, I would say I don't think that would be a governance calendar. So when we think about the governance calendar, this is, um, annual series of events. So the governance calendar would kind of give us the, the systemic pieces that we want to view each year and then break it down by month. So that's why I'm saying, uh, for certain ones, you know, maybe tuition students, I think that could be a regular update. Maybe twice a year, what's happening? And then maybe, you know, as we get an update, um, capital maintenance and facilities, I think, could also be a regular update. I, I just think the foundation might be a, a future topic.
Sure.
Um, is this, uh, I guess see, like for January, um, there's the DIB advisory committee update since something happened in the meeting, uh, in January, would that make sense to push to February or is the advisory committee, uh, even ready or prepared to make?
Well, I think this was just an update and I believe, uh, member Hassan even update.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought, I was thinking more of the
Oh, a presentation.
Yeah, update that happened last.
Oh, I, I think we could definitely, you know.
Because I thought this happened every meeting, right? Every time you guys have a meeting.
Yeah, so we did stuff, I think as a committee, we discussed, um, having, um, like a, a two-parted, uh, big review, big presentation, instead of everything, uh, focused on that last meeting like we did, which was like three hours. It was overwhelming for us as a committee and overwhelming for them as well for the presenters. So I think, um, am I, am I, um, correct on that?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about just trying to break it down into smaller chunks, so there wasn't a big.
Yeah, that makes sense. And it's presented that way on this governance calendar to January and April. But there wasn't a much broken down, less variables, but still not just a, you know, you mean like.
Absolutely. And a hundred percent, you're, you're speaking to exactly what we want to get to.
Yeah.
And I think just because of the nature of the formation of the committee at this time, we've only met twice.
Twice, yeah.
Only met twice, so we weren't in a position to bring folks, but I think for April, we will, it will look different.
Yeah, yeah. And we requested me actually yesterday too, but several of us are sick. And a lot of people couldn't make it, so we've had to postpone it. We actually scheduled for next week and so, um, so more to come on that, but we, this is exactly what we want to do. It's hopefully present twice a year. Um, and, and breaking it into digestible pieces, but it's not overwhelming.
I see on the calendar that March, there'll be, there'll be the budget, the first, second votes. But I don't see anywhere workshops, uh, before or during. Why? Are we going to be having budget workshops? Question.
We can add that in. Yeah, we, we are. It's just not a, something. Would it make sense to keep it in March or looking forward, would February be a better time?
I think February would be.
So moving forward, I'm not sure how that's gonna work for this year, but.
Well, I'm sorry, just about, what did you mean by not this year?
Well, given the, where we are right now in the budget process, I'm not one, I can't say for certain that we'll be prepared for a budget workshop. In February.
Okay, will we, will we have a workshop prior to when we vote on the?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. And I plan on, I plan on infusing some of the, uh, budget updates into my updates to, to offer that communication, because certainly the discussions are happening and principals have all submitted their information. We just don't have it applied yet, so that's where we are in the process. But yes, I will communicate.
You're just saying for future February is a goal, but this year probably not.
Yeah.
But we'll still have it.
Thanks.
So, um, just to kind of clarify that point too, um, because in the plan, they weren't scheduled in last year and the year before, and we were like, we need a workshop. So, and it just helped us have this type of discussion, right? And, and you know, um, so does that mean those will be added to our important dates at the very end at some point? Just so that we often, you know, put them on our calendars.
I think that's something we can talk about and, and look more closely at and make sure, uh, if it's not infused in the update that I provide at the meeting, is there an additional date that we want to add?
Yeah.
And, uh, I think we can definitely consider that.
Because each year we're all like, though, we need to, right? And it's not scheduled in, we're trying to like quickly get something in and.
It's been.
Yeah.
Scheduled in the outside of a regular meeting.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and what you're saying was not an opportunity.
Correct.
Would like to have that before.
Yeah, if we can schedule that, you know, it's giving them ample time.
Is it possible to do it in this format? I'm not sure if that's.
A budget workshop?
Yeah.
You're not talking about the executive session.
No, no.
And I think that's what we've done.
I think that's what it, no, it wasn't.
Typically, we've, it's been sort of more of a
Presentation.
Now, it was, it's a public meeting, but it's not the formality of this, of this type of meeting.
Wasn't broadcast.
If we're in another room, the door is open and anyone can come in, but it's not, it's not this level of formality. And I.
I can gather some more information and talk to, um, folks about how it's been done and how we want to potentially shift it. But I hear, I think what I'm hearing is we want an increased amount of communication around the budget and what's happening with it prior to having to vote on it.
Yes, yeah.
We're all very committed and devoted to budget. Any other liability suspension on governments' budgets? All right, um, so let's move on to the regional MSBA, uh, meeting and board chair training report. So I was looking at if you're going to participate in both of those items. So there was a regional MSBA meeting and then also the board chair training report. Uh, training, I guess I should say. Um, and both of those were designed to sort of help get, um, committee members throughout Maine that sort of up to speed with where we are with legislation that is important to the region and educators. How we can support that. Uh, it also covered some really great, uh, sort of guidance and recommendations around a couple of new policies. But overall, it was really just more of how do we, how do we, uh, connect to each other as board members? How do we make sure that we're being civil and respectful? Um, just very fortunate that that was an issue that we largely don't tend to deal with, so very thankful for that. But this also being that perspective too, uh, from our own state, um, the variety of complexities of the students is just fascinating. But the, the NSA needs, the RSCs, we are very, we're very lucky here to have simplified the work structure, so. Thought that was, that was great. And then again, this MSBA training stewardess of the two, and you can't go over. So, I, I think, I think they're, um, I know they're going to do a special workshop too on the, uh, two seventy-nine budget, so, so I'll share that with that application actually. Looking forward to that. And that's what I, on Wednesday, so. Just wanted to share those updates and then move on to topics for our future workshops.
Yeah, I worked through that a little bit.
Yeah. Sessions.
Yeah, and are there any other, I'm thinking even, you know, uh, longer term. So if there are aspects of the school department that you'd like to dig into a little bit deeper, uh, you know, whatever those topics are, I could even obviously go into, um, the summer and then next year. Um, but just to help me understand, you know, where, where are, where is the need for more information? Um, so that I can then, you know, can look at, uh, prioritizing those needs based on, uh, where we are and what, um, initiatives we're moving forward with at any given moment. So I'd love to hear any, you know, other topics that you're interested in.
Yeah, so what I was, I'm curious about, so our previous superintendent had a real commitment to mentoring and did some fantastic work. And I'm just, I'm wondering what the status of that work is. I assume it's continued, but is it planning to be continued and just, yeah, sort of an update on the status of the mentoring program and the mentoring work that started, uh, during Jim's time.
I remember, okay, you have a question. Oh, it's, um, I want to dive into, uh, the, um, east side, west side divide. Um, there's some issues, um, economic disparity as well as perceived and we have real uh, negativity on the two sides, obviously, is that there's two districts, um, leading in even into my household, my son in sixth grade since, you know, like, oh, we're going against Alabama, you go to kind of, yeah, we're gonna, you know, like, in my opinion, a little bit harsher language than I would like. And, uh, I've heard it from lots of other, um, parents and students, that there's a real divide that students feel on the one side or the other. And I'd like to have a, a workshop to give to stuff like that. We sort of create, like, how to make us one district.
I agree with that. And that ties in the facilities question too.
Yes.
And it even ties in curriculum, like there's mismatches between the academic tracks you can be on, on the east side and the west side. There's mismatches in recess time, like at Fairmount, they don't have morning recess, they go inside at eight forty. I don't, I don't know why, I don't get it, but just the inconsistency across the, the sides of the city. Eyebrow raising. And you just want to make sure the kids are getting the same opportunities.
Yeah, and, and I will add on to that. I think the misconceptions too, that, you know, we as a district are favoring the east side over the west side, you know, in terms of sports. I've heard um, negative statements like that made over and over. And no matter how many times you try to correct those misconceptions, they're there, right? And I think they've been there, you know, since I moved to Bangor twenty years ago. And so how can we as a really, you know, um, combat those types of misconceptions? You know, I think, um, it'll take the administrators to come up and say, this is actually what we do, because you know, people don't know what they don't know. And I, again, these are, it's hearsay, it's like stories that are shared. Again, I heard this twenty years ago. You know, I live on the east side, but I know that I have friends on the west side, they say simply this is not true. And then you hear the opposite. And so it's like this back and forth. So I think it's that clear divide that we need to say, no, we are one district and these are the facts, right?
Great.
Um, I, um, it's just little things. I don't even know if they're, um, topics of workshops per se, but I know that they come up quite often. You know, um, who can use our facilities, you know, and we have strict policies around that. But it's always like, you know, um, is it partisan? Is it nonpartisan? You know, things of that nature. Well, whether so-and-so, you know, comes in and you know, again, I'll go back to misconceptions and things that are said over and over that are simply untrue and inaccurate. So, um, you know, how can we stay ahead of that and, um, so that we're not having to address this over and over as a school committee? I don't know if it's like really a workshop, but it's something that, I don't know.
Wonder if there's, um, you know, if there are other topics of interest
Yeah.
that need further communication, maybe those are things that are, uh, just an idea pushed out on our live feed or have a designated spot on our website or something like that where they're, you know, it can be referred to, say, well, it's here on the website. So you can, you know, check that out, because we do have a facilities policy.
Exactly.
But I, I get what you're saying. And the ease with which, uh, people are able to access that information, I think is important to consider.
We've got a good line on this. When you're falling from a plane, you need a little piece of paper. We've got a good line on this. When you're falling from a plane, you need a little piece of paper that says pull this cord, not a ninety-six page PDF. Check all the boxes for transparency and openness, but if it's a ninety-six page PDF with jargon, it's not actually solid.
Thank you. I guess it really gets a great opportunity for a podcast, so. You know, even have things like a classified discussion. People come on and have a conversation, but again, that's really just another day of this workshop, John. It's the exciting part of the workshop. Wild conversations like this. Do we have any other, uh, future workshops or recommendations? Um, so at that point, I'm going to listen to informational items. So. Up next we have our work dates, um, Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, uh, regular meetings, seven P M, the library. Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven P M, the library. Wednesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven P M, the library. Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven P M, the library. Um, before we move to a adjourn.
I have some question. I'm very chatty tonight. You're gonna regret this new formative. I'm just questioning the March fifth meeting, cause it's off schedule. We usually meet the second and fourth Wednesdays. Says regular meeting.
Well. I'd, I'd have to, I'll have to get back to you on that.
No problem. I bet it's like recycled from a previous year where like the February meeting was during February vacation or something. Is that during February vacation?
No, the twenty-sixth is not, no.
Well, we could use the fifth for a budget workshop.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I think, um, if I'm not mistaken, there are three in March because of the.
That's typically what it is. And I, what I was gonna say is, um, I haven't decided, um, yet which ones are gonna be workshops, because I want to see where things land. So. Following up, uh. There may be an opportunity for workshop.
We best should be later workshop.
Yeah.
Not regularly. Cause last.
Yeah.
But it's not a regular meeting, cause it's not on the actual schedule. Second and fourth should be called something.
For extra save the month, extra meeting.
But is it a regular, hold on, is it a regular meeting if it's already listed as a regular meeting? Cause it, on our, on our schedule, cause I remember checking this recently, it says March is three meetings, because of such a. So is it a regular meeting because of that?
Well, if it says that, maybe it is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll have to.
I think it says on the website, we meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays.
Except for March.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember my first year, the March did have three meetings.
It did, yeah.
I remember like, oh.
Yeah.
Why?
Something every day.
We, we, we meet a lot, yeah. We meet a lot in March because we need it, right? And one is typically the workshop.
And on the website for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, that obviously has three meetings. And the twelve, the twenty-sixth says, twelve review, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Twenty-sixth says approved, twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, but I, I still imagine it's still regular meetings where we're doing that.
Thank you.
And you will let us know.
Absolutely, yeah.
But so I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Whoever you want.
Thank you all.
You're gonna regret this.
It's a very.
Second bar one?